President Gonzalez, we are streaming.
Thank you and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for October 15th, 2025. I call this meeting to order. I want to remind everyone speaking during tonight's meeting that we do use the closed captioning function on YouTube, so please speak as clearly as possible. Now I ask that you stand if able and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance in English and in Spanish.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Puro fidelidad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y a la república que represente una nación a Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos.
We will now move on to our acknowledgement of tribal lands. We gratefully acknowledge the native peoples on whose homelands we gather, as well as the diverse and vibrant native communities who make their home here today. I would like to now ask for a moment of silence for those who have given their lives in service to their country. Okay, we will move on to our roll call. Dr. Albright, may I have a roll call, please?
Crystal Tapia Romero.
Here.
Courtney Jackson.
Here.
Nina Domínguez.
Here.
Nada Tomorito.
Here.
Heather Benavides.
Here.
Neil Gonzalez.
Here. Our next item is to consider approval of the minutes from the Board of Education meeting on October 1st, 2025, and the revised minutes from the Board of Education meeting on September 17th, 2025. Can we have a motion and a second?
I move to approve the minutes from the Board of Education meeting on October 1st, 2025, and the revised minutes from the Board of Education meeting on September 17th, 2025.
I'll second.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call vote?
Also, I want to acknowledge that Board Member Janelle Estorga is online. I forgot to call her for a roll call. Crystal Tapia Romero.
Yes.
Courtney Jackson.
Yes.
Josefina Dominguez.
Yes.
Ronaldo Tomorito.
Yes.
Heather Benavides.
Yes, but we also need to adopt the agenda.
Yeah.
It's coming. Okay.
Janelle Estorga.
Yes.
Danielle Gonzalez.
Yes. Our next item is to consider adoption of the October 15th, 2025 Board of Education meeting agenda. I'd like to remind Board members that per APS Board of Education Governance Manual, you can request that an item be removed from the consent agenda before the meeting agenda is posted, but not during the meeting. Can we have a motion and a second?
I move to adopt the October 15th, 2025 Board of Education meeting agenda. Josefina Dominguez.
This is Member Tapia Romero, second.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Crystal Tapia Romero.
Yes.
Courtney Jackson.
Yes.
Josefina Dominguez.
Yes.
Nada Tomorito.
Yes.
Heather Benavides.
Yes.
Janelle Estorga.
Yes.
Danielle Gonzalez.
Yes. Our next item is public forum. Board Secretary Estorga, can you please share the instructions for public forum?
Yes, thank you, President Gonzalez. Welcome to our public forum guests. When you sign up to speak, you are asked to review rules and expectations which our presiding officer will enforce. The New Mexico Open Meetings Act requires that our agenda specify in advance the items that will be discussed and voted on during the meeting. Therefore, public forum is not a dialogue among speakers and board members, but rather a chance to hear from our community. We will call participants to speak in the order they signed up, whether in person or virtual. Those with you there tonight will be asked to come to the microphone at the back of the room when their name is called. Online guests will stay in a virtual waiting room until it is their turn to speak. We have set aside 45 minutes for public forum. If there are 22 or fewer speakers, you will have two minutes to speak. Otherwise, you will have one minute. Tonight, we have nine speakers. Once your time is up, you'll be asked to quickly wrap up. If you feel unable to convey your message, you may email boardedaps.edu. In addition, for those of you here tonight, a representative from our service center is there to assist you. Mr. Gonzalez, please introduce the speakers.
Thank you, Secretary Estorga. Our first speaker tonight is Jerome Ergon, followed by Catherine Lind. You'll be, you'll have two minutes once you begin speaking. That's fine, sir.
Hello, Board members. My name is Jerome Ergon. I'm a Pro Start teacher at El Dorado High School. And I came here to read this for you tonight. Career and technical education plays a vital role in helping students become career-ready. CTE concentrators outperform other students in test scores and have a higher graduation rate. CTE integrates core content into its curriculum. Our students gain valuable workplace and life skills that make them successful regardless of their chosen path. APS has itself recognized the importance of these classes. That's evident in the move to the academy model where we put an emphasis on career readiness. But these CTE classes require funding, and there's more than a million dollars available to APS this school year through the Perkins Grant. We're well past the money when the money was anticipated, and APS needs to expedite these funds. Let's make sure the money is available and we can continue to equip students for college and career success by offering hands-on learning and real-world experiences across a wide range of pathways.
Thank you, sir. And our next speaker is Catherine Lind, followed by Karina Acosta.
Hello, my name is Catherine Lind. I am the Culinary Arts Teacher, Pro Start Teacher at Atrisco Heritage Academy. I'm here today to talk to you about the Perkins Grant. The Perkins Grant that APS has used for a number of years is valuable. It provides crucial funds for CTE classes throughout the district. As with any grant, though, there are uncertainties. Grants themselves can disappear, and the process for attaining them can be difficult, as we are seeing this year. My colleagues and I would like the district to consider shifting more APS money to the hardware that these classes require. This would not only reinforce the district's commitment, but would reduce reliance on just one main source of funding. Not to be punny, but we do not want to put all of our eggs in one basket. We hope, while hope remains that this money will be available in 2026, we're already on the other side of fall break. Going forward, we would be wise to dedicate the money we can control toward the priorities we've identified and our students' needs. Now, on a personal level, for my students, I know that the grant money has helped with buses for us to go to CNM. They've helped with buses to go to competition in Santa Fe. I know this year we had to choose between Pro Start and FCC LA because we could not compete with both. The money directly affects the students in the classroom for groceries, for smallwares like pots and pans. Atrisco Heritage is 17 years old, and we need those kind of equipment, but we don't have money to do that. I think our biggest fear here is that we're going to run out of money before the end of the year. The kids take culinary arts to cook, and if we don't have any money to buy groceries, then we cannot give them the full experience. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Karina Arvizua Costa. Okay, you'll have two minutes once you begin speaking. One second, ma'am. You'll be followed by Jaden West. Go ahead.
All right. Good evening. My name is Karina Arvizua Costa. I am a culinary teacher, also known as more than likely it's like Pro Star. Again and again, our district seeks to emphasize equity. All of our students, including general education and special populations, deserve the same opportunities and support because they need to have access to every part of their potential. We won't live up to that goal if we don't provide exposure to a variety of options. That means, of course, dedicating resources, money, time, and people to CTE classes that give students a chance to explore various programs of study, to let their interests shift and evolve to the love, to, and to love learning. That's what equity looks like. Make all options equally available. We will achieve that in the best way by making CTE a priority of our district, and that means ensuring we obtain grant funding and dedicate district resources to these classes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jaden West, followed by Tom Schutz. You'll have two minutes once you begin speaking.
Hello, my name is Jaden West, and I am a culinary art Pro Start teacher for Albuquerque High School. Again, the goals of the Perkins Grant align precisely with the goals of our district. Every day that passes without funds being available is another day when it's harder to provide high-quality CTE for our students. The grant is dedicated to preparing students for high-skill, high-wage occupations. This is exactly what the district emphasizes in its stated goal of equipping students for college and career success. Next is professional development for staff. APS has a stated commitment to fostering a culture of continuous learning and growth among our educators and staff. The grant is also aimed at our industry and business partners, another use that syncs up precisely with APS's stated commitment to community-based schools. There's a million dollars worth of support for the priorities we have already identified, the priorities that will serve our students and our community. Whatever work needs to be done to access these money is vital, and we hope that work is completed soon. Our students deserve these opportunities. We can and must do better.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Tom Shook, followed by Janet Delgado. Mr. Shook, you'll have two minutes once you begin speaking.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. My name is Tom Shook. I'm the Director of Education for the New Mexico Restaurant Association, Executive Director of the Hospitality Industry Education Foundation, and the State Coordinator for the Pro Start Program, the High School Culinary Arts Program. On behalf of the New Mexico Restaurant Association and the Pro Start educators, I am here to speak in support of the educators' requests that the already-designated Perkins funding be immediately released to their programs. Pro Start Culinary Arts Program is a critical CTE and workforce development program, giving students a direct pathway into the hospitality industry or to post-secondary educational opportunities. As we all know, students who are part of CTE programs are much more likely to graduate and find employment than those who are not. Pro Start is a national program. Students who fulfill and complete the two-year curriculum have the opportunity to step into supervisory positions in the hospitality industry right out of high school or receive post-secondary educational credit at hospitality, culinary, and hotel management programs. It's concerning to me to learn that already-secured Perkins funding for APS high-school culinary programs is being held back. These educators cannot run their programs without it. CTE classes don't function without supplies for classroom and lab work, curriculum materials, professional development opportunities for the educators, and competition catering events for the students. It's our hope that this crucial funding will be released to the educators in order to continue their amazing work with their students. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Janet Delgado, followed by Mary Walker Herrera.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Gonzalez. My name's Janet Delgado, and I proudly am a Pro Start and Culinary Arts Teacher at Rio Grande High School. I also teach the Agriculture Nutrition Program that I believe you heard about not too long ago in a board meeting that takes place all summer long, so we keep our students engaged all year long. You've heard a number of my colleagues emphasize the importance of getting CTE funding for CTE classes like mine. I want to emphasize that you're absolutely right. No one doubts the district's commitment to college and career readiness. We share that commitment, and we want to do the important work to meet our shared goals. That can only happen with proper funding. Please do anything you can to make the Perkins funds available for these classes this year. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mary Walker Herrera, followed by Dr. Sanello. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, School Board members. I'd like to read something entitled "I Have a Dream." "I have a dream that New Mexico will be known for the people they vote for. I have a dream that these officials will serve the people who voted for them. I have a dream that both voted-in officials and the people of New Mexico will take care of each other, keep each other accountable. I have a dream that families in New Mexico will be cultivated and nurtured, just as we cultivate and nurture our famous hatch green chili. I have a dream that the children from these families growing up in New Mexico will be cherished and cared for as they will care for the next generation. I have a dream that children in New Mexico will be different from the way they are treated in New Mexico today. I have a dream that the children in New Mexico know that they can make a difference, that they use wisdom to use their voice to make New Mexico a state of accountability. I have a dream that their children's children will be even wiser. I have a dream that the children in New Mexico will be educated with parental guidance instilled from accountable New Mexicans. I have a dream that the elected officials in the public education system will come from the children being educated. I have a dream that those officials will be wiser and make themselves accountable to their voters much better than today. I have a dream that one day, the APS school board members will be held accountable for the office that they hold. I have a dream that we, the people, will be accountable for the board members we vote for. I have a dream that our children will be the next brilliant, bright, future voters, generation, families in New Mexico. I have a dream that the children dream of a better New Mexico, and I have a dream that God blesses New Mexico. Thank you."
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Sanello, followed by Janet Sayers. You have two minutes, sir.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the School Board. Not only a doctor and minister, but a USA track and field master-level official and athlete. Most New Mexican agrees that girls and boys have the right to single-sex about bathrooms, locker rooms, and sports at school. For instance, a poll by Independent Women's Network found that 91% of New Mexicans believe that K to 12 boys and girls bathrooms should be separated. The poll also found that 84% of New Mexicans believe sports should be separated by biological sex. This is about school policy of concern in Albuquerque and Las Cruces, how these policies put girls at risk. Two new lawsuits that have been filed against these New Mexico school districts bringing national attention. When biological boys are allowed in girls' bathrooms, locker rooms, and sports teams, that puts the girls at risk. For instance, a 12-year-old girl was raped in a rear-anchored school bathroom. Girls can be severely injured when they are forced to play, to play sports against boys. As an, as an example, high schooler Peyton McNabb in North Carolina suffered severe head and neck injuries after a transgender athlete spiked a volleyball into her face. Peyton has suffered long-term effects from hurting injuries, including paralysis, impaired vision, learning disability, constant headaches, and depression. A national grassroots organization, Fending Education, has recently filed lawsuits against APS and LCPS because of their gender-inclusive policy. These lawsuits are violations of the Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972 and the Equal Protection Clause of the 14th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. The lawsuit also cites violation of recent executive orders related to sex discrimination in federally-funded programs. These lawsuits seek to hold LCPS and APS accountable by requiring them to, and I quote, "act suitably to remedy unlawful policies and practices in order appropriate relief," unquote. Let's use common sense. Would you want you and your daughters to be in the same locker room, bathroom, and sports with trans-identifying biological boys? May God have mercy on APS and New Mexico. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Janet Sayers. And you'll have two minutes once you begin speaking.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board and staff. And I do hope that as the Board continues, that we can solve some problems. Problem number one: Millions of dollars of recreation facilities sit locked up, unused, on weekends, on holidays, and during the summer. So let's try to solve that problem. How can the public go back to pre-2018 when they could be used? Problem number two: There I am in the little bitty square and the giant timer. That's what people see when they're watching, you know, live YouTube. Let's solve, let's make this better. The city and the county, you all are, APS is as big as city government. Let's make this better. You can do it. Invest some money in that. Number three: The reasonableness of expecting board members to have full-time jobs and to serve without any kind of individual support. I would hope that over the next several years, APS in the operating budget would look at, how can there be aides, whether it's one aide for two board members or what? So that, excuse me, so that there could be more support to help board members. And lastly, this is, this is the APS family. Everyone who's been part of APS since 18, whatever, 85. And Del Norte lost a member of its family in Alec Montoya, the young man, the pediatric nurse that was killed in the tragic accident in front of UNH hospital. 2014 graduate of Del Norte, he was on the wrestling team, and so his loss affects the Del Norte family. And I would just urge kindness and to each other as we enter the November 4th election. I will be voting yes on the bond issue, all 285 million, 300 million, whatever it is. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Board President Gonzalez, this completes public forum.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez, and our public forum speakers. Our next item is to consider acceptance of our progress monitoring report for Goal Two, Math Proficiency. Our presenters are Dr. Antonio Gonzalez, as our Acting Superintendent, Dr. Randy Mollerwine, Deputy Superintendent, Chris Sanchez, Assistant Superintendent, and Sheri Jett, Chief Academic Officer. I just figured if I named a bunch of names, some people would come up. And Mr. Chris West. Thank you. Tonight, we'll be monitoring Goal Two and interim Goals 1.1 and 1.2. So we will begin with Goal Two, Math Proficiency, but before we begin, we need to confirm that our monitoring report is complete. I believe that all of the criteria for an effective report have been met, but I'll open up the floor to anyone else who thinks we might be missing one of the elements. Does anyone have evidence that suggests otherwise? Nope. All right. Excellent. Since everyone agrees that the required elements are present, we will open the floor for our monitoring conversation. As a reminder, we have had the opportunity to ask questions that are technical and tactical in nature before tonight's meeting. Those questions and their answers are posted with the agenda materials for the public to see. Each board member is expected to ask a question during the meeting to help us understand how the administration's actions align to the board's goals, to the board's goals. Those questions must be SMART, meaning they must be strategic, measure-focused, ask-oriented, results-driven, and time-bound. So let's get started. We'll go ahead and start online. Member Estorga, do you have a question?
I do, thank you. Sorry, I have a crying baby in the background. So my question, in the questions that were submitted beforehand, the answer for Question Two states that this progress is closely tied to stronger use of high-quality instructional materials, targeted teacher coaching cycles, and more consistent subgroup monitoring through structured data routines. But in the report, under Middle School Root Cause Analysis, Problem One, it says the primary cause is a lack of instructional alignment and fidelity to high-quality instructional materials. So can you explain how both are true and how we plan to solve the gaps?
President Gonzalez, Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Antonio Gonzalez, Members Estorga, when we're looking at the root cause analysis, we did not meet our projected outcome for our students who are identified as economically disadvantaged. So within that root cause analysis, that was the focus group that we were looking at. Within Question Two, we were looking at what were the gains for our EL students or students with disabilities, our Native American, our African-American students. So it's kind of, it's, yes, it does sound like it is contradicting itself within that, those two different questions, or one was a question and one was the root cause, but the root cause was in relation to our economically disadvantaged students.
And Joseph, I can follow up, President Gonzalez?
Yeah, go ahead.
Follow up on that. Can you share a little bit more on the plan to replicate what you did with African-American students and economically disadvantaged students so that we can see that same increase?
Yes, Member Estorga. See that as a culturally responsive approach in the support of our African-American students and the gains that they made. What we are really trying to accomplish this school year is building coherence within all of our departments. So as you're looking at the strategies that we're rolling out, we're really wanting to break down silos, so to speak, and have our teaching and learning department really work with our special ed department, our LCE department, our Native American department, our Indigenous Peoples Department, and really start building this coherence so that as we are deploying resources to our schools, specifically our priority and emerging schools, it is a team approach and not a one-off approach.
Thank you. Additional follow-up, Member Estorga?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. We will turn to Member Tapia Romero.
Thank you. So when we, in relation to this goal, when we look back at the subgroup of economically disadvantaged, what barriers might be contributing to these students falling behind, and specifically, how will that, how will that be addressed?
Board President Gonzalez, members of the Board, and Dr. Gonzalez, thank you for the question, Board Member Tapia Romero. When we look at the data, particularly among our economically disadvantaged students, one constant challenge we see is attendance. And so as we look at what are the barriers that are keeping our students from coming to schools, one of the solutions is in our student success systems work across the district. And so in our priority schools, we have devoted FTE to somebody who is actually looking at that attendance data, but also looking at it in correlation with academic achievement, behavior, and then also our goal for skills, habits, and mindset. So we can get in front of potential challenges when we start to see a student is missing a lot of school, the student's acting out, et cetera. And so that role is specifically dedicated to working with the teachers to come up with those really sophisticated interventions that we know will help particularly this student population.
Thank you. Can I ask one follow-up? So in relation to the attendance issue, how long is it actually taking us to follow up closely with the family and ensure that we're keeping them, we're getting them back on track?
Thank you for that, Board Member Tapia Romero. I, I would have to say it's, it's probably varies by school and the level of sophistication of their student success system at this time. A relatively sophisticated system is within days of looking at our early warning reports and looking at the data that's telling us about the whole child. But I, you know, would be remiss if I didn't say that we have schools that are in the beginning stages of setting up that system. But certainly, when we look at our performance framework and how we've allocated resources towards that, we do have an emphasis on priority schools that do serve a lot of our economically disadvantaged students.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Jackson.
Thank you. So you mentioned one of the system changes that you're working on is the, the student success system, particularly as it relates to chronic absenteeism. And so I'm wondering if there are other strategies that you're using to reach every middle school? um, to reach every middle school? And in particular, what are you going to do to ensure that those strategies are reaching the highest concentration of our economically disadvantaged, um, students?
Or President Gonzalez, um, Dr. Gonzalez or Deputy Superintendent Member Jackson. Um, so when we're looking at our economically disadvantaged students or those who are furthest from equalization within our school sites, and we're looking specifically at our priority schools. For example, those priority schools have received funding for our six promising practices, three of which are FTE. One specifically targets our student success systems. Um, we have our teaching and learning coach and our community school coordinators, um, all being funded within our priority schools that do have, um, like speaking, might make an assumption, but have the highest population of our Yasi Martinez African-American students on their campuses. So like Ms. Jett was talking about, having these extra allocations, this human capital on the campus to support the schools in monitoring who our students are, but also getting that information to the teachers so that, um, we can see the results in the classroom. So that is, system is currently happening right now.
Uh, may I have a follow-up, Madam President?
Yes.
So to follow up to that, we're almost to November. And so they've been in school four months. So what is the early feedback on whether or not those system changes are working for, um, are they working as planned?
Um, Member Jackson, thank you for the follow-up question. Great question. Um, one of the things that, um, myself, Assistant Superintendent Forrest, I've been sitting back there in the crowd, um, we have, uh, this current school year, we have been working directly with every single principal to ensure that there is a critical action within their ninety-day plan that reflects the work of the goal. Um, there is autonomy in that where the school, every school is different. So they are looking at their data differently, um, to identify what that critical action may, it might be students with disabilities, it might be EL students, it might be Native American students depending on where they feel they need to focus, um, their supports. So we are currently coaching, going in and coaching all of our principals. Number one, to ensure is that critical action within their ninety-day plan. What supports do they need from us so that we can then reach out to our teaching and learning departments at coherence? Um, and follow through with the strategies that are within the report. So we're really trying to build, um, a through line uh, from what we're doing with the district to the work that the assistant superintendents are doing, coaching with the principals, getting it to the principals so that they can get it to the teachers who are really working extremely hard. Um, but now with a through line of supports coming from the district all the way into the classroom.
One more. Um, I, I, I'm assume I know what the answer to this is, but, um, I, I've heard Dr. Blakely say this several times, that every student only gets that one year in school. So I am going to assume that I know the answer, but is there a sense of urgency in working through those through lines? If and when, um, concerns are brought up throughout the, the actions that you have taken? Given that they only have one year to be in sixth grade, one year to be in seventh grade?
Um, Board Member Jackson, thank you for the question. Uh, I'll give you an example. About three hours ago, I was talking to one of our middle school principals. Um, and she was talking about supports for her math teachers. And, um, they were struggling getting the support. So I contacted our teaching and learning folks and said, can you contact this principal? Because they, they gave me some concerns. And there was that sense of urgency where that phone call was made directly to that principal to get in touch with that math department to offer those supports is happening like in real time. So yes, there is a sense of urgency.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Dominguez.
I think, yeah, I, I think you answered this question, but I don't want this to count as my question because I want clarification off of what you just asked. So when you say through line of support, uh, it implies the possibility of more support. And I think your answer suggested that. Immediate response to, uh, school site administrators and teachers ne- needing support.
Or President Gonzalez, uh, Dr. Antonio Gonzalez, uh, Member Dominguez. How about organized support? Where we're really trying to, um, ensure that what I'm up here reporting out to you all is making it to the principals as here's the list of strategies that we feel are going to target our eighth grade students, specifically in math or yes, Yasi Martinez and African-American students. These are the supports that we are here to help you with. And ensuring that the principals are getting them coached by me so that they can then get them down into the, into the teacher's hands so we can see it in the classroom. So it's, it's an organized coherence approach.
Right, but, but they are getting an immediate response. Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was, that I understood that correctly. Um, so my question has to do with, uh, strategies uh, and planned actions on page nine of the goal two, um, report. But it's also related to page six, uh, the root cause analysis, um, being the lack of instructional alignment and fidelity to high-quality materials. Um, so here's my question. How will you, how will the superintendent and her staff um, improve collaboration among, between, with middle school teachers and onsite, um, administrators to affect change? And what will be the feedback, uh, loop for those strategies?
Board Member Dominguez, I'm gonna tackle the principal side of that question and I'll be teacher side too, see, AO Jett. Um, so one of the, one of the things that we are currently doing is, um, I talked, I touched a little bit earlier about, uh, the critical actions within the ninety-day plan. The other aspect that connects to this, and think of another through line, is we have, um, asked every single principal to align their, their own PDP to that ninety-day plan. So as, excuse me, as I am working with principals, coaching principals, the conversation is now all around the ninety-day plan and their own PDP, um, which is another level of support. In addition to that, at our monthly principal meetings, the principals are coming to these meetings with a problem of practice that they are creating. And this problem of practice, um, they are sitting with their colleagues and going through a consultancy protocol to look at different ways of approaching it, tackling it, refining it, um, so that they can go back and make their leadership moves based on listening to colleagues rather than always listening to me.
Thank you.
Board President Gonzalez, um, Member Dominguez, thank you, Mr. Sanchez for setting that up. I think, um, you know, Mr. Sanchez referenced another layer of support. So certainly there's the work the assistant superintendent does directly with the principal in terms of being the instructional leader and, and helping hold the teacher accountable through coaching and support, um, to make sure that we are providing standards-based, uh, instruction in our classrooms. And I would say that's probably our very first strategy is to continue to focus on standards-based instruction at grade level in our classrooms. And so with that, um, we have done, if you will, a relaunch of our illustrative math, high, high-quality instructional material curriculum because we, we did see, we felt like, especially when we looked at Garrel 3.1, that maybe we weren't leaning into that curriculum in the way that we could and we could certainly support it better. So, um, that's definitely a strategy. Another strategy that we've come up with through the teaching and learning team that I'm really excited to launch next year. And I do understand the urgency, but it also takes some time to stand some things up. But our, um, teaching and learning coaches in the middle school, I'm sorry, our resource teachers in the middle school department have come up with basically seven core strategies that we're going to launch to our teaching and learning coaches who are in the schools to help really define how math instruction in particular will look different. And then how we can specifically support that. So in relation to access to standards-based instruction, uh, if you remember from last year, we talked about accelerated learning and that, that emphasis on, we want to make sure that every student has access to grade-level materials and then we're not actually dropping them down because we're worried about, um, any gaps in their skills. So we're looking at just-in-time intervention as one of those strategies. So really thinking, what's the prerequisite skill that we have to make sure kids, uh, know in order to be successful in this lesson? If we need to spend ten minutes on that prerequisite skill, that's part of the shift in math instruction so that we're really setting the students up to be successful in the rest of the, the lesson. And we're really leaving less to chance. Um, and I think related to the question about collaboration, it's a, a conversation, Mr. Sanchez, and I have been having around, what are the collaborative and professional development opportunities within a middle school schedule? And they vary honestly, just depending on how the school has used its resources. But once we understand better what those structures are, so for example, if a principal has been able to give a collaboration period to their teachers, well, that's one in-road, right? That's one way that we can begin working with teachers. Uh, you may have heard of a, a principal's two for twenty. Every twenty days, a principal gets two hours to work with their staff. That's another in-road, right? And so once we understand best of structures and we can really lean into not just the work with the principal, but the work directly with the teachers.
And I have a follow-up. Um, I appreciate your efforts to honor autonomy, uh, at the school site. I think, yeah, I mean, we're all human and, and we, we're not robots. So, um, I take note of that and apprec- and appreciation for it. Um, how, you, you mentioned the resource teachers identifying seven core strategies. And so how were these strategies, um, if at all, guided by a, a conversation? How, how were, with teachers, how, how were they arrived at?
Thank you, um, Board Member Dominguez for that question. So, um, we are leaning into the expertise of our middle school math resource teachers who are also looking through an interdisciplinary lens because the content all needs to come together. And we feel that's particularly important as we launch our middle school redesign. So these strategies have been, um, we've been collecting them, if you will, over the last year as we've looked at our successes in math classrooms across the district. And sometimes when we come before you and we've talked about any of the goals, we will tell you stories about this is what the school did in order to achieve that. And so we've been studying that and really looking across for the themes that tell us what those best practices are that are going to be successful in our schools. Obviously with a lens towards that autonomy because we do know that every school community is different. So this is a, a compilation, if you will, of a year's worth of research and what we see as being successful in our math classrooms.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate the, and I really appreciate the interdisciplinary lens, particularly because I think, I forget where, cross-functional strategy design included fine arts. And as an athlete and fine arts person, I think those two are critical. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Dominguez, Member Tomorito.
I, yeah, my question falls on page seven. Um, problem three. Uh, students lack readiness in algebra and gateway domains. Um, your root cause states, the root cause is a lack of foundational skills and conceptual understanding from prior grades. Students are not mastering prerequisite concepts before moving on and creating significant gaps in their knowledge. So what I'm looking at here is special education. And, um, so I, um, since you're talking about foundational skills in prior grades and conceptual understanding, so how does literacy proficiency impact the three-point-eight math proficiency rate among children with disabilities? And what integrated instructions or strategies can we use to strengthen both foundational reading and mathematical reasoning skills? Since we're looking at such a very low proficiency level for our kids with disabilities?
Or President Gonzalez, Member Tomorito, um, I'm going to address the part about, um, how we can address really what is essentially the, the four, uh, domains of language in all instruction. And then I'm gonna ask, uh, Chris West to maybe talk about the impact of literacy on math achievement. So I'm not sure I can speak, I think I could probably make something up. I'm not sure I could say it quite right. Um, and so, you know, one thing, uh, that we've really been talking about, uh, across K-12 and across all disciplines is the idea that we are all language teachers. And so we know how particularly important that is in mathematics as well. So, uh, mathematics has a vocabulary all its own. And our illustrative math curriculum is pretty text-dense, um, honestly. And so providing students with those opportunities in reading, writing, um, speaking and listening are really a critical component of all of the classrooms. And working particularly with our language and cultural equity team, um, really emphasizing again that we are all language teachers. Yes?
Uh, Board President Gonzalez, Deputy Superintendent Gonzalez, Board Member Tomorito. Well, that's a tough one. So, um, so we, um, we draw upon my father on this one. Um, so we know a lot, you guys probably heard so from our early childhood studies that have gone on from the US Department of Education and other places. So there, there obviously is a strong correlation between literacy and math. Usually goes the other way around. Usually I find that, since you're strong in math, we'll also be strong in literacy. Um, so there is a correlation, but I, I don't know how much more detail I can really provide you in this context. Um, but I would say some of the things that we see, it's also, it's, it's also, we tend to find that, um, math is a little hard to teach. Um, and we tend to find that we're, as a district, I believe that we have a lot of strong strategies in reading. I think also the structured literacy work that's gone on has really helped us improve. And we've seen that in our results that we present to you with, um, goal, goal one as well as goal one point one. You don't know, we also have to talk about that right now. Uh, but yeah, there's a correlation there, but the, the challenge is too is, is, as, um, Assistant Superintendent Sanchez says, it's, we gotta do both. And that's kind of been one of our struggles is being able to do both because they're both tough goals to meet, but they're both things that we're doing. And that's where all that vibration stuff comes in together. So yes, they're correlated, but it's obviously different to teach a student math than to teach them to read. Um, and the challenge that we have and that we're working on, and something that's now across all of our departments, because I, like, I know the strategies that, um, Mr. Sanchez put out because they're now something that we all share. So the idea is that for all of us to learn the strategies and all of us to do it so that we're not just focusing our reading, we're focusing on math. Um, but I think I'm going a little bit away from your question.
No, it answers it a little bit, but I just have one more follow-up. Because my concern here is these are eighth graders and they'll be going into ninth grade. And I only can tell you as an advocate, and when I get called in at a ninth grade level and a parent finds out that one, their child is not proficient in reading, and then also finds out with a child with a disability that they're also not proficient in math, I can't tell you what that does to them as a parent. So I don't know how we can make this better, but it's a serious concern as these kids are entering high school. Because they only have four years left to improve those skills. So I would hope we would do it better. And that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Member, um, President Gonzalez, Member Tomorito, if I may. I think there's something under the leadership of Dr. Blakely that's worth mentioning in response to your point is that there's the belief that we do have the answers in the room. And there's the belief that we have some strong practices that we need to lift up. I would like to point out that overall, um, we did make the strongest, um, showing in, on this specific assessment in mathematics overall, up two-point-three percentage points from last year. But the power of this process is showing us that there's specific areas we need to work on. Special education, economically disadvantaged, economically disadvantaged, for example. Those are two areas we need to work on. And through the leadership of Dr. Blakely, one of the things that I've been very impressed that I've seen her do is be bold enough to highlight. Is be bold enough to highlight. The success of the schools that have made gains in these areas. For example, at the beginning of our principal meetings, they are physically called up. And they are recognized and offered as examples to peers, to their, to their principal peers. There's been some good work that's gone on. And let's talk about it in a very data driven way, in a very honest way. And there's been that recognition and there's nothing like getting a word of affirmation, right? But that's not the power of this process. The power is what happens after the recognition. That's when other principals go up to these principals and they ask, tell me a little bit more. Show me. And that's where invitations to schools and walkthroughs go to where these principals are able to work with one another. To learn in detail, what are you doing for special education students? Cause I've seen it. Again, in that area, for example, or economically disadvantaged. Students or show me how the student support system process works at your school. So um, I believe that this process has really led us to recognize through the data. Some of the schools that are doing good work and lift them up as an example for their peers. To um, leverage and grow upon those um, good pieces of work.
Because I think it also stated within some of your root causes. That the um, lack of having the equitable. Deliverance of some of these materials and instruction is also a challenge. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, member Benavides.
Thank you, President Gonzalez, and good evening. Thank you for being here tonight. So I'm just going to reference my question, um, the answer, and then give you my question for this evening. So. My question that I submitted was what factors contributed to the notable 9.5 percentage point increase for African American students? And can these practices be identified and scaled across other groups? Um, to scale the practices, the district is focusing on expanding coaching and modeling, delivering differentiated supports for high need schools. And developing cross functional strategies that better serve students with overlapping needs such as. English learners and students receiving special education services. My question is, can you expand on the cross functional strategies and development and provide a timeline for implementation?
For Board President Gonzalez, um, Deputy Superintendent Gonzalez, um, member Benavides. So. Earlier I spoke about um, building this coherence within these strategies. Um, so. We've, we have been working really hard to um. Tighten up our work within all of our departments so that we can really focus um. Putting up our strategies into action at the school level. So. Building this coherence so that we can start replicating the things that are really working well. Um, and having. Uh, specific departments who are supporting schools with a culturally responsive um, instruction. Um, and really going in and like helping schools, number one, identify who the students are. Um, what are the areas of focus that they need to uh, really look at with these, with our focus groups? Um, putting a plan in place, but then it's not just relying on one department. It might be even Chris West departments who's coming in and supporting the schools on how to read data. So that they can actually put a true plan in place to support. Not only our um, African American students or Native American students, but um, all of the students across all the focus areas as well.
Okay, so it sounds like it's already, i- it's been developed and it's. In implementation now, if I'm understanding you. It's kind of you, you building the plane while you're flying it sort of thing. All right, thank you.
Thank you, um. The great thing about going last is my questions usually get taken. So I'm gonna try, I'm gonna say this question the same way I had it written, but I think it's very similar to member Tom Moritos. Um. So essentially we know that math standards build upon each other and you all describe in the report. The scaffolding that's used to teach grade level content while also um, integrating. Where students are behind. And so my question is, whereas member Tom Moritos was focused specifically on students with disabilities. Mine is what strategies is the district using to improve vertical alignment to address the math gaps in elementary? For President Gonzalez, um, thank you for the question. I, I was like, oh, elementary, um, but I, I can see why that's really important. Um, so as we, we look at our elementary work in particular. Uh, we are looking. At numeracy, even though goal one is specifically about early literacy. And so. Uh, in relation to that, and you'll probably hear more about it in, in the next progress monitoring report. We're really thoughtful about what are the priority standards? That a student across the grade levels would um, need to master in order to experience success. But that being said, um, we do know that a shift occurs when students transition from fifth to sixth grade and how the math. Is approached, maybe how it's taught. And so with this elementary focus on. Strong numeracy, we're ensuring that they have those prerequisite skills in order. To come into in particular sixth grade with a really strong foundation to build on. That's hopeful. And I guess um. Based on what you are currently seeing as the. Standards that are not being reached in these seventh and eighth grade assessments. Is that leading to any changes in coaching or instruction for elementary math? So you do have the priority standards already identified for elementary math, but are you making shifts based on where you're seeing? Standards not being met? Yes, um, thank you for that clarification. So again, particularly in the fourth and fifth grade, when we hit those intermediate years. This is where we're beginning to set that foundation for what's going to happen in the sixth grade. And so um, the vertical articulation between the elementary and the middle school has been an area of focus for many of our principals. Maybe Mr. Sanchez can speak more specifically to it. Um, but the, the sense that we certainly aren't. Looking down at our elementary and saying, you're not teaching them this, you're not teaching them that. But if you're not a middle school math teacher, you may not know exactly what it is we're expecting the students to do. And so those continued conversations, particularly between a fifth and sixth grade teacher are really critical for ensuring that. Um, when our students transition into middle school, they're coming in and they're confident and they're ready to be successful.
Um, for President Gonzalez to add a little bit to that. Um, one of the great things uh, that's really taken off this year with um, Dr. Mallorang and CAO Jet. As well as the assistant team is um. We are all in such close proximity to us and Dr. Mallorang is, has really started to stress uh, since he's come on that. Um, these goals are not independent of one another. Um, Chris, goal two is not middle school. Um, I, I have to support goal one. Um, goal one has to support two. We all have to support each other in order to support goal three. Goal four lives in all of us. So um, Dr. Mallorang and CAO Jet have really done a really. They've done a really good job of ensuring that. All of us as assistants are knowing what each other's work is and supporting each other's work. So that when we know that if our middle school kids can't read, it's going to be a struggle on the math test. Um, we also know that you don't come to middle school to learn math. You are a mathematician in middle school and those foundational skills are built in elementary. So there's a lot of um. Go back to that coherence word again. We're really starting to build it within our team, our leadership team. So that we all know what we're doing in order to support the principals and then building that foundation within. The 140 principals so that they're starting, um, just two months ago. We had every single principal walk through what the different initiatives are for the district. So really building this um, understanding of what each other's work is.
Great, thank you. Um, we can go back around, open it up again. Um, so just uh, member Storga, do you have any additional questions?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. And then anyone else, any additional questions?
Yes.
Yes, member Dominguez, go ahead.
I'm having a hard time deciding which one. Um. I'll, I'll continue the um. The two lowest groups and, and they've been my focus now. Both English language learners and I've tried to do my homework about. Current EL, exited EL, never EL. And, and it gets. It gets complicated, right? Um, and I think it's the same situation with special ed. So I just, I wanted to preface. That for people who are listening that. It's a complex issue, this notion of um, assessment of the, of these particular groups. And, and I think we see it in the results. Um, and that's not an excuse for. The low, very low um, results. So the question is this. Um. What? Legally and ethically appropriate assessment tools. Or all tools are available to accurately. Evaluate the growth of students with disabilities and ELL students. And I guess I'm. This question is informed by. A story from a parent. Whose kid wasn't performing in high school. And yet, two years after he left APS, I mean, just barely left, graduated. He's at. Uh, Socorro, the, the, the school there. Um, and not all kids are going to fall in that category, but we're not capturing what they know too. So it's, I don't want to excuse the 95% of ELL and special ed kids who aren't. Proficient. And I also want to capture. This question about evaluating their growth. Based on what they know. And I'm sorry, did, do I need to ask the question again or do, are you clear?
Clear.
Okay.
For President Gonzalez. For member Dominguez. So I, I just wanted to address some of your, I'll, I'll try my best to address some of your concerns about assessment. So that I think the important thing to remember about assessment is that. This is one measure. Um, so when we're talking about. This data point, which um, for here, we're using the NMSSA, the New Mexico Measures of Student Success and Achievement. Sorry, I think I do that just to see if I can do it. Um. This is again, these are, so these are standards that were developed. This is not, this is not a national test. This is not a Southwest test. This is not a. Region of states. This isn't a Mexico developed test. So this test was developed by Mexico educators. So these are. I mean, I don't think any of them are right now. I'm not sure. But my point is there's educators that do work for APS that work for other districts who all came together. To say are these appropriate items to determine what our students knowing can do. And they are based on the Mexico adopted standards. But that's one measure, which is also why we come to you with the I-ready data that we bring to you. Um, which is another measure. And that is, that is a. That is a nationally used test, which is why we have that national norm data because enough people use it across the United States. And again, that one, if you want to think about, about like passing muster or passing a standard. So the New Mexico test, the standard there was, do New Mexico educators? Do they feel that it's measuring what they're asked to teach? With the I-ready there, it's not only is it saying. And there's some people here who might disagree with whether it's measuring the standard, what we have in New Mexico, but it's. It's multiple districts and multiple states and districts and multiple states who are saying. Yes, this test is covering what we expect our students to know and be able to. Know and, and do, excuse me. But let's also not forget the most important part in my opinion, and this is maybe strange to hear from an assessment person. Um, but it's, it's those formative assessments in the classroom. It's the unit test. It's the, it's the collaborative work that they do with their peers. Um. It's all that learning that happens in the classroom. And I don't mean that to diminish obviously the, the tests that, that I'm responsible for. Nor any of the time we spend doing those tests, but it's the collaborator, or excuse me, it's the. It's not one data point. And like, that's one of the biggest messages that we put. I know that um. Mr. Sanchez as well as Ms. Chat, when we talk to schools or even when we talk to each other, it's like bring all the data points forward. So I, I just want to assure you that we, it's not, these data points aren't meant to diminish those students. Um, but I, and, and it doesn't mean that there's not more innovative things that we can be doing. Um, which I know we'll be talking to you about in our next presentation, but I'm not supposed to do that here. Um, but, but you know, there are some caveats with using these new assessments and we're, we're learning some of those. But I, I just wanted to just, just not challenge you, but just challenge the assumption that. Don't take this as one data point. Take it as one other data points. Um, but I also think like that's when we go out, when you guys ask us. Why did this work? What's the root cause? Like that's where. Um, my colleagues, like that's where they go out and they're like, well, show me. It's like. Same way we do teacher evaluations. It's not just based on, I walked in your classroom one day. It's based on, well, show me your lesson plan. I'm going to come do a quick walkthrough. I'm going to come do a observation. So I, I think I'm on a little bit of a soapbox, but I just wanted to assure you that it's. Don't, don't take this as the data point. Take it as one of the data points. Um, and I think.
And I do, yeah.
And I also just, as somebody who did badly on standardized tests, even though here I am as the data guy. Um. There were other ways of me to demonstrate what I could do, but also those standardized tests also helped me once I. Got known enough to be humble enough to realize I had some things I needed to learn. Uh, that I needed to work on. So I just think that there's one data point and I know that's a long answer, but I, I hope that I help some.
Yes, but I think maybe I'm not articulating this idea appropriately. These kids aren't empty vessels. And so how do? Where are we accessing what they do know in order to get them? To this one tool? Or this other, we have two tools that we rely on and they're not doing well in either one of them. And, and that doesn't have to be answered now, but. But that's my concern. How are we accessing what? Kids know. They show up. They know something. Um. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, board members, and thank you to our presenters. For this productive conversation. And now we must vote on whether or not we are going to accept this progress monitoring report. So as a point of clarity, our vote is to accept the report as a formal acknowledgement that we had a satisfactory conversation. With the administration and that we have a deeper understanding now of how the current reality for students lines up with our vision for them. In order to accept this, we must be able to answer yes to the following three questions. Does the reality of this report meet our vision of the goal? Is there golf, is there growth toward the vision? And is there a strategy and plan sufficient to cause growth toward the vision?
Yes, yes.
In essence?
Yes. I say yes, no, yes. I don't know what that means and.
You do not think there's growth toward the vision?
I think we're in progress. I heard there's a lot of, you know, establishing a system and, and trying to. Figure it out and, and that's okay. That's, I mean, thank goodness we're doing that. So the answer is. Yes, no, yes, or it's not there yet. For me.
Growth, so is the question. Is there growth?
Well.
So you think now?
No, we dipped.
Okay. Um, but otherwise the majority looks like the answer to all three is yes. And so we can accept the monitoring report. Confident that the data is accurate and that the superintendent and team are performing. At this point, we are ready to entertain a motion to accept this monitoring report.
Uh, I move that we accept the progress monitoring report for goal two math proficiency. This is member Jackson.
And this is member Tapia Romero, second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Crystal Tapia Romero?
Yes.
Courtney Jackson?
Yes.
Was Fela Dominguez?
No, and that does not mean that you're not working hard at it. Just means that I. What I said earlier.
Ronaldo Tomorito?
Yes.
Heather Benavides?
Yes.
Vanelle Storga?
Yes.
Yelton Gonzalez?
Yes. And so the motion carries. Thank you for the presentation. We will move on to our next item, which is to consider acceptance of the progress monitoring reports for interim goals. 1.1 and 1.2 focused on early literacy. Our presenters uh, now include Anna Chavez, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Schools. Uh, as I stated, we're ready to monitor interim goals 1.1 and 1.2, but before we begin, as we did with the last report, we just need to confirm that the report itself is complete. Uh, so I do believe that all the criteria for an act, for an effective report have been met, but I will open up the floor for anyone who feels. Like the report may be missing one of the required elements. Does anyone have evidence to suggest the report is missing any elements? All right, excellent. Since everyone agrees that the required. All right, excellent, since everyone agrees that the required elements are present, we will open up the floor to our monitoring conversation. As a reminder, we've asked technical and tactical questions in nature before tonight's meeting, and those questions and their answers are posted online with the materials for the public to see. Each board member is again expected to ask one question at least during the meeting to help us understand how the administration's actions align to the board's goals and guardrails, and those questions must be smart. So let's get started, uh, we'll go ahead and just reverse our order for this time and start to my left, so we'll start with member Benavides and end with member Storga, and then we can go back around, um, but member Benavides, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Gonzalez, and thank you all for being here again this evening. Uh, my question um is what targeted instructional strategies can or will be implemented across all K through three classrooms to close the twenty-two to twenty-three percentile rank gap between the Martinez-Yasi plus African-American students and their peers?
For President Gonzalez, um Deputy Superintendent Dr. Gonzalez and Board Member Benavides. Uh, we would like to talk about and explain the strategy within our elementary school commitment, which does align with the three priority standards that have been identified through our teaching and learning department and resource teachers. Currently, um, we have just rolled out and presented the strategies that are um have been suggested for classroom teachers to start to inquire and uh test out and go through the process of um professional development as well as observational feedback cycles and uh receiving feedback and coaching from principals as well as with assistant superintendents. So this is one of the pivotal pieces that we can take a look at, that we, where we can start the work. And then we are confident that that will start to transfer over to ninety-day plans so that we can create more sophisticated systems and strategies of support for those um instructional strategies that have been suggested.
Thank you, any follow-up, member Benavides?
Not at this time, thank you.
Great, thank you, member Tomorijo.
I was trying to look for your rollout to um parents, and um I know that many times um I can't recall if it was during this time that you were looking at um having uh booklets for parents or that guideline for take home, um so they can you, use the home um learning environments to help students, and I wanted to know how those were going to be produced in other languages, or are we adapting them for our subgroups of Martinez and Yasi?
For President Gonzalez, um, member Tomorijo, right now, we do have, and we had last year, one pagers that explained the standards that uh each grade level would be responsible for learning. We are continuing to take a look at refining them just from feedback that we received to make sure that they are user-friendly, to uh be able to explain and implement in the home. Al, Albuquerque Public Schools also has a very amazing uh translation department that we are able to turn in all of our work to be translated into uh all of the languages represented uh within our public school system, so uh it does take a little bit of time. However, uh we do have those systems in place, and uh family teacher conferences are coming up in November. So uh we have a, a timeline that we are meeting so that we make sure that those materials are out at that time.
My, my second question to that was um uh it's great for the printout um to have that for families who cannot speak English, and I'm glad during parent-teacher conferences that discussion will be done in, in whether their home language or yeah, so I'm trying to figure out with um, how will you present that to them on a one-to-one basis?
Yeah, so we, uh, teachers have access to translation services also, and they can schedule ahead of time with a translator throughout Albuquerque Public School System that participates in the actual conference. So they are able to translate into the family's home language and serves as an interpreter between um the teacher and the family so that there is a discussion that continues um at the level of understanding for both. And um usually, we try to encourage teachers to schedule those out very early, since we do have a large number, and typically, they are accommodated very well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, member Dominguez.
I'm going to follow up on the uh parent or family engagement piece. So what are the key gaps for students with disabilities and English language learners? And how might the district and the board engage families more meaningfully and effectively to play an active role uh to help us address these gaps?
I am looking at Mr. West to give me the specifics on what the gaps are, and but I'll give you a minute to do that. Um, you know, but what's coming to mind is several different layers of work that we're doing, particularly through Dr. Salazar's office with family engagement. Um, so I'm going to start with our community school impact coordinator and our community school council model that we use, and so this is an opportunity for us to really begin to drive not just community support uh and projects through the council, but also a greater understanding of what the academic needs of the students are, and so then, when the community and the families can come together, we can provide specific resources that help them support I'm thinking of what the kindergarten, kindergarten priority standard is. Print concepts, recognize and name all upper and lowercase letters. This is a, uh, something we could make really accessible at home to help our families and even our community too, like to work on with our kindergarten students. Um, other layers certainly, you know, include uh the, the communication that the teacher has with the family, the, the, we can't ever overemphasize the importance of the teacher in the classroom, because they're the ones who really know what the student can and cannot do, whether, however, they're, they're performing on a standardized assessment, and so again, through those, those conferences, those conversations, um, being able to really pinpoint what those skill gaps are and leverage our resources to help the families really be partners in the academic achievement of the student.
Follow-up. Um, are there what strategies are being discussed that are more community, uh, I guess, goal four oriented to impact uh everything you just laid out?
Sure, uh, I'm not sure I can speak to specific strategies this evening, I'm going to think about that for a minute. Um, and also give this office a minute too. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm going back to the community school council as a really um successful way of beginning to address this, and so if, let's say, we come to the council and we say, you know, our kindergarteners are not able to identify their beginning letters, then that is an opportunity for us as the educators to provide our expertise around, this is how we can help, but then also think about how we develop resources and disseminate those resources throughout our community so that it really does become um a community effort. I know you have
So let me clarify, when when I say community, I, I, I'm like extending it to parents.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay.
Uh, board member Dominguez, we, on behalf of Dr. uh Salazar and the work in his departments, um, he has outlined um goal four benchmarks for each grade level, similar to what teaching and learning has done with our ELA and our math standards. So uh teachers and principals have access, as well as families, of benchmarks that our grade level should be hitting. An example in kindergarten, sits around kindergarten with a letter recognition, uh begins to talk about things they're working toward, often remembers to pause and use the learned strategy. We have things outlined as key look fours to be able to strengthen, and these are things that absolutely can transfer over to the the home piece to support in that work as well.
And I, I've just been out in the community a lot, despite being gone ten days, I was in the community, and I'm hearing the need to like, parents are, all that is great in isolation, right, they're all at, at home alone. But it, I think it helps when they can connect somehow, some way through the school. Um, is what I I've heard from members and parents specifically. So just reporting back.
Uh, member Jackson.
Okay. So when when I look at the data here, and I'm particularly looking at next steps and uh which is on, just for goal one, it's on page six. Um, one of the next steps under training and monitoring is ensure comprehensive training on interpreting AMIRA data. Um, what I noticed was that in um goal, goal, interim goal one point one with the new AMIRA data, the first data point that came in was below the goal. On goal one point two, the first AMIRA data that came in was above the goal, so I am not making any sort of commentary on the required software that is, needs to be used, I'm not commenting on that. My question is um in regards to comprehensive training on interpreting the, the data, do you believe that this tool is potentially better at capturing what students know um and are able to do? And what in particular, what strategies are you going to use to ensure that the training on interpreting that data is sufficient enough to continue to improve the proficiency rates like we have seen recently?
For President Gonzalez, Dr. Gonzalez, and uh for member Jackson, so I'm, I'm going to speak just to the um in terms of the tool. Um, but I will go, but my colleagues obviously speak about the strategies, but I can tell you with the tools, so something that is exciting about this assessment is that we didn't used to receive, I think I may have said, but we didn't use to receive standards data along with the, we call it the Scarborough's rope, which I've learned really well, thanks to my colleagues. Um, when we talk about um phyological awareness, vocabulary, background knowledge, decoding, high-frequency words, language comprehension, comprehension, excuse me, overall mastery, structures and reasoning, and word cognition, so why am I blasting all these words at you? We didn't used to be able to measure all those things with our assessments that we had. I didn't measure all those things, it measured part of it. And while this is a new tool, one of the things that we're, we're very excited about, at least I am, um, is that it also has standards level data. So then when we say, these are our priority standards, we actually cannot look. Um, so in addition to us looking at, and you know, we present to you guys beginning year, middle and end of year data for our, our line graph, but there's also stuff that's happening in between those data points um with the progress monitoring that occurs inside that box, and also in terms of again, let's also remember that also teachers are also checking on these things to their own assessments. But there, we're we have more data that's actually aligning to um the structured literacy work that's been going on in our district. So we're teaching, we, I mean, many of us, even my colleagues are taking that training, and it's well, great, so how am I doing in those areas, but we didn't have a tool that showed them. Um, and now we have something, so I think
That's great.
that has been, I, we're very hopeful that that'll be a game changer in terms of what's available to us um to check some of our assumptions about what, what we think that we, the students knowing can do. But also, I, I also wanted to point out, um, because of the collaboration that's going on um between all the departments, we, we actually had, we'd set aside time with the principals, um, and we even had the MERA CEO come out. Um, and I'm not saying that as a plug for the company, but I'm saying that is because we actually, like, we're getting time to go through the data. And we, we've done our best to do that, kind of on a, I would say, kind of like a, not ad hoc, but definitely like based on it. You, you can request, they will offer it, but now we're, we're actually having dedicated time to sit down and to go through the data. So when we say to the principal, we need you to be a strong instructional leader. And for me, instructional leader is, is having that ability to look at the data and have those conversations with your staff. They're getting support to do that now, and I, I think that's something that we haven't done in a while, I think it's very exciting. Um, and along with that, um one, one of the good things I think about this test, um getting a lot of notoriety, whether good or bad, is that we we've had on-the-ground teams, we've had a lot of resources to go to the schools. Because the adoption of this assessment is very critical, because if it's going to pay off for all the wonderful tools I have, people need to have confidence in it, but they also need to know how to use it. Because we can show all these line graphs, but the question is, how do I connect that to my learning? And I think that's where I'll, I will segue to my colleagues, because I think that connects to the, to the work that um both Ms. Sanchez and Ms. Chat are doing with the teacher and the principal.
Thank you, Mr. West, I appreciate that, and um I, I want to acknowledge that we are learning this assessment, and so um it's difficult to maybe interpret right now. But I am appreciative of all of the guidance we've received and how we might begin to make sense. And I would agree, just knowing how those standards uh are being um measured and having that metric to really truly understand where our skill gaps are is going to be a game changer, in my opinion. The strategic part of it is really in the data cycles that we're driving using the assessment, and so um certainly, this is to Mr. West's point, this is one data point, and many that we use to look at um student performance, uh particularly around early literacy, and so getting that regular cadence of data review, not just at the district level, but in particular in the classroom level. And so one, one of the layers of support in addition to the work of the assessment team is through um the work of our resource teachers and the training of our teaching and learning coaches, who are ensuring they know how to access these platforms, how to run the reports, and how to make sense of the reports so that there is somebody on the campus who's able to work directly with the teachers to see what is this data telling us? And then what are the um just-in-time and real-time interventions that we're going to put in place in order to begin to close that skill gap? Want to add anything?
Um, that I always say this, Mr. West, I just love it when you, when you present, because I think you always give me some extra information, I wasn't aware that it had standards data with it, and the first thing that I thought when you said that it, it, it's presenting standards data, is I went straight to guard rail three. And so I'm appreciative that um the guard rails that we have set for you as a board are being interpreted systematically uh in the classroom, so thank you for that, I don't have a follow-up question, I'm, I'm, I I hope that, that by having this, this tool, that we will better be able to learn what our students know and are able to do, and it sounds like that possibility is there. Thank you.
Great, thank you, member Jackson, uh, member Tapia Romero.
Thank you, okay. You guys answered everything, so I'm trying to pivot real quick over here. Um, because it was specifically, you know, wanting to know about how, how teachers are supported, and you gave us all that info, so when we think about, I guess, at a deeper level on how teachers are teaching, are they teaching based on how trying to figure out how to frame it appropriately? Are they teaching based towards how the students are going to be tested? Or what is that looking like to ensure that we're actually training them and supporting them properly throughout? Does that make sense? You guys made me pivot real quick.
Board, board member um Tapia Romero, it does make sense, and I think that is uh really the beauty of standards-based education, it's it's really about setting, we know what the bar is that students have to reach, and it's our job in the classroom to make sure that the student uh both meets and or um goes beyond that bar, and so you know, when we think about um how this assessment may drive the work we do, it's a standards-based assessment, our classrooms are standards-based as well.
Mm-hmm.
So, did you want to?
That is a very complex question. Um, and I think the way we start is first, we create the conditions for teachers to be able to plan and collaborate. Um, the availability of data to be able to talk about what students do know, and how do we move them from there to the next point? And then also taking a look at our student groupings within Yasi Martinez to figure out uh there could be, they could be in multiple groupings, and are we looking at all of our supports that could be in place for one student? So it's, it, it does take a lot of planning time and strategic planning time, so that is something that uh principals are tasked with, especially through our leadership tool and coaching with assistant superintendents. But also principals and teachers have access to the walkthrough tool that we are utilizing, and those have look-for strategies that we can um make sure that if they are planning for them, are we seeing them and how effective are they? So it is uh an ongoing process that needs to, you know, that has some checks and balances. Um, and it is something that is explicitly being talked about by all And it is something that is explicitly being talked about by all stakeholders that are campus.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Member Astorga.
Thank you. Before I ask my question, I just wanted to acknowledge the new line graphs on the disaggregated data and. I love it. I love looking at those line graphs and not just the table. So thank you for that addition. My question is pretty specific, so. No pressure, but the last report in February. One of the planned actions was accelerated learning and using the Just Write Reader books and video lessons. So my question is. Since there is no update on that specific program in this report. I'm interested to know if that program has shifted because of AMIRA? And do you believe that the program may have contributed to the second graders 1% increase on the AMIRA assessment?
Thank you for the question, Board Member Astorga. I'm gonna. I'm going to warn Mr. West that maybe you can speak too, if we know if there was any correlation between Just Write Reader and second grade. Achievement. So it's coming your way. So Just Write Reader as an initiative remains in our district. Last year, we were fortunate enough to have some additional resources to begin to pilot that and invest in it. And what we see now is that because we are able to pilot is that schools are beginning to use. Some of their own funding to invest in Just Write Reader. In addition, working through our instructional materials department, thinking about. Now that we have this data, where is that investment going to make the most difference? So you're not necessarily seeing it in the report, not because it's gone away, but because we haven't. Necessarily disaggregated where we would get our greatest return on learning with Just Write Reader.
Board Member Astorga. So just said, so I, I will tell you just, I don't have any immediate research based on our district. In terms of Just Write Reader. So I can only speak to, I know that when we, when we originally purchased it. Or I guess the district. That it was one of the, it's, so we, we. One of those sites that we really enjoy that I appreciate from the US Department of Education is the What Works Clearinghouse. And Just Write Reader is one of the, one of the tool that does, is, I think I believe it's. Level three, I believe is the right level, but you might have to fact check me, but I'm pretty sure I'm right on that. But anyway, my point is that there, when you say like, we picked a tool that has evidence and research behind it. So. I would assume if, that we would see the same effects here, but I don't want to go on, you know, say that, because I have not looked at that. When a team hasn't looked at it. However, I do know that with AMIRA, one of the cool things about it is actually that we're. Through our work with our colleagues and library services and education resources, who are departments that we have in district that. They're actually, they're using the scores. So in addition to the, what the teacher sees. They can also use the data that does come from the assessment to cater the, the, I don't know what they're reading packages. I don't know how you call it. The books, the books that are sent home, they are, they are appropriate to where the student is. But by that, I mean, it's. Not just appropriate as in this is where they are, but it's there so they can grow. So that they're being challenged in an appropriate way. And I think, again, that's something that we hadn't had before. So we had, we've been using this, this tool which we purchased because it has evidence behind it. But now we're actually able to, again. Make sure that when we do take time away from instruction for assessment, that we're doing something with it. And I, so when I found out, I will just say personally, when that request came through to link to two, I was excited. Because I think that again, to, to go to some of the earlier questions about at home. These are books that can go home. So then if the student is getting materials that are being kind of personalized or crafted to where they are in terms of their. They were there on the rope towards their journey to reading. There again is another tool that's aligned. So you're going to think what I'm excited about. Is that all the things that we're talking about are all aligning now. So with the teacher evaluation with the, our structured literacy walkthroughs, those are aligned. The assessment is aligned. We're using books that are aligned. Teachers are using curriculum that's aligned. So I think. Think that's a, a strength that we should point out.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's kind of where my mind was going to is the alignment. And I'm not sure how many students were using. The video lesson on the Just Write Reader that is provided, but I just thought it was a good kind of segue into AMIRA being online and this kind of like reading platform. So hopefully that, that helped that segue a little bit, but thank you.
Great. Thank you. So my question is essentially about time and time use within the classroom. So what strategies or systemic shifts are you employing from the district level? Regarding how time is spent or how you're directing how time is spent or how you're monitoring how time is spent. Indirect literacy instruction versus assessment, and I'll say assessment inclusively, formative interim and the summative assessments. As well as reading instruction that's integrated across the curriculum and other activities. So. To simplify, what is the district doing at the system level to make sure? That we are, that you all are monitoring to monitoring and. Providing guidance around time for literacy instruction.
For President Gonzalez, thank you for the question. The, the answer really lies in the use of our high quality instructional materials, particularly around. SAVIS. And we're fortunate, we have layer, we have many layers of instructional materials to support our students. The SAVIS is our core curriculum. And so how we actually train our teachers to use a five day reading routine through the SAVIS. Curriculum is a, is a critical component of that time usage. Now that being said, we all know we also have to set aside time for the assessments, both AMIRA and formative assessment. I believe Mr. West can speak more specifically to the time use and like, I mean, they're not, they're not assessing on the computer. All day long. We know that. These are relatively quick assessments when they sit down for it. And so really, we're looking to the teacher to make those instructional decisions about. How and when students are doing what. So I don't think it's necessarily in a lesson plan, like. They all do this and they all do that. And then we count up the minutes to see what they all did. But we certainly work within a, a framework of, we expect a certain number of minutes of ELA. And working with the principals to incorporate that time for intervention, which I think is 30 minutes for AMIRA. A lot of this is really. Based in the teacher's expertise of how they want to manage their classroom. And in terms of how we monitor that, I think the structured literacy walkthrough tool that. Really impressed with, I really got a good look at it today. I was like, this is really good. How we're beginning to break apart the expectations and really also help. With the critical feedback that goes to the teacher about how they might make some of those instructional decisions. That would be to a better benefit of the student. What would you add?
I would add, Board President Gonzalez, that we do have guidelines within required amount of instructional minutes. But what we do realize in our systems is that. You know, block scheduling creates. Some, some limits. And we want to make sure that things are inclusive and integrated within our content areas. And we know reading happens in every content area. So how are we really pulling some of those strategies into. Outside of the 90 minute of ELA required time. Also looking at our learning labs as one of our strategies that we have outlined here. And as Ms. Jett suggests or pointed out that we have. Training around what a full week looks like. Within one of those content areas, but you had also specifically asked systems. We have our student information systems that helps build some of our master scheduling. And we're taking a look at. Those guidance pieces as well as assistant superintendents and then figuring out how to offer that information to principals. To make sure that that gets out into their operations piece of their responsibilities.
Yeah. Great. Thank you for that. We will go back around, see if there's any additional questions, just starting with Member Astorga again, online. Did you have any more questions related to interims 1.1 and 1.2?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. And then any other follow up questions or additional questions rather?
I have one more.
All right, Member Dominguez.
How do students? Get an opportunity? To, or, or teachers, how do educators provide an opportunity for. Serendipitous learning? The joy of discovering, right? Poetry and, I mean, and I'm thinking about INAZ. Elementary school and that. I would hate to. Structure them so much that they're not doing the wonderful things they do there. With good results. So. Just curious about how that's. Built in to this structure. Alignment.
Board President Gonzalez, Board Member Dominguez, that's really in the lesson planning. And we. Know and encourage our teachers to incorporate their passions. Now that serendipitous type of learning also is a teacher expertise move. They know in the moment. Oh, there's a lesson here and being able to do that. And I feel really confident in the teacher's expertise to recognize those moments and take advantage of them. In addition, Ms. Chavez mentioned the learning labs, professional development. And what that essentially does is it, it's professional development on our core curriculum. And it helps the teacher go through and identify exactly what you're talking about. So rather than it being. You know, kind of turn the page, whatever, and do these things. The teacher is taking the time to really think through, oh, this is the point where I would make a connection to what. We talked about last week or what came up just sort of out of the blue, but the kids were really interested in. And to really make those thoughtful connections in the lesson plan.
Also, and we've talked about this a little bit, Board Members, is our initiative of Genius Hour within some of our models and also extending that out to our emerging schools as well within our performance framework. Really building on project based learning, integrating all of our content areas. Finding out student choice and passions as well. And figuring out how to align it with our standards. So that is something that we are actively working towards. With principals, with teachers, and then also our teaching and learning department with the resource teachers are really. Helping us outline some of that work. So. There are a lot of opportunities for that to extend. And I think we will, we will definitely keep an eye on Genius Hour and how that continues to evolve.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Any additional questions?
I have a comment, if I may.
Yes.
Thank you. I. Remembered this because of Board Member Dominguez's question. So thank you. But I just wanted to give. A kudos and shout out to whoever thought of bringing the AMIRA character to life for the students. I think that is an amazing replica of what it means to literally bring learning to life and have students. Be in that kind of energetic and, and fun way of learning. So. Round of applause for you all for that. I think that was great.
Thank you. And thank you to the administration for that and for your presentation tonight. And thank you, Board Members, for the questions and the productive conversation. So now we will vote on whether or not we'll accept this monitoring report. And again, we are voting to accept the report as a formal acknowledgement. That we had a satisfactory conversation with the administration. And that we have a deeper understanding of how the current reality for students lines up with our vision for them. So in order to accept the report, we must answer yes to the following three questions. Does the reality of this report meet our vision of the goal? Is there growth toward the vision? And is there a strategy and plan sufficient to cause growth towards the vision? Is the answer to all three yes?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Then the board can accept the progress monitoring report, confident that the data is accurate and that the superintendent is performing. At this point, we're ready to entertain a motion to accept this monitoring report.
I move to. Accept this monitoring report. This is Board Member Dominguez.
No, second, this is Board Member Benavides. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Tapia Romero?
Yes.
Courtney Jackson?
Yes.
Josefina Dominguez?
Yes.
Ronaldo Tomorito?
Yes.
And Benavides?
Yes.
And Alice Storga?
Yes.
Manuel Gonzalez.
Yes. So that motion carries. Thank you again for the report and more importantly, for all of the work you're doing to improve literacy in our district. So we will move on to our next agenda item, which is Agenda Item 5.3, a discussion on the timeline for the Student Outcomes Focused Governance Request for Proposal Process. For this agenda item, our presenters are René Apolaca, our Chief Financial Officer, and Adrián Sanchez, the Executive Director of Procurement. So just to provide some background, which you also have in the discussion memo for this agenda item. So we began a process to seek an external coach to support the board on coaching and professional development for student outcomes focused governance. We ran through steps of that initial procurement process. And have not completed the process. And so APS Administration will share through some potential next steps for that process. And then we're going to weigh in on what we think might be the next best step. I just want to remind everyone that this is not a conversation about the contract, about the proposal, about the terms. Or any of that. It is merely about the process and how we move forward on next steps. So anything related to anything that's not processed or that is related specifically to any of the proposals. We will cut off that conversation. So I will go ahead and turn it over to our presenters.
Thank you, President Gonzalez, Board Members and Deputy Superintendent Dr. Gonzalez. There are three options that were identified as next steps. The first is to continue. As planned and pick up basically where we left off with the RFP evaluation and review. Conduct interviews and score and then vote at an upcoming board meeting. The second would be to pause the current RFP process. And allow the new board members to continue and pick up the evaluations. Of the RFP score and vote on the current proposals with the existing RFP. And the third option would be to start the entire process over. Which would include reissuing a new RFP. And eliminating the one that is in process.
Great. Thank you. And so just as additional context, we've started the process and we got to the point of conducting interviews and then we got stuck with. Scheduling challenges. So given those scheduling challenges, which have not gone away, just to keep that in mind as we weigh in. So for this one, I will go ahead and just go through the line to get a quick perspective from each member on sort of option one, two, three. So according to the bullets in the discussion memo, so they're bulleted, but we'll just call them one, two and three. And then we'll go ahead and open up the floor to discussion if there's significant divergence in our opinions. If there is significant convergence or consensus in our opinions, we'll go ahead and accept that as a consensus and move forward. All right. So with that, Member Astorga, are you able in a position to kick us off? Or do you, yes, it looks like you are. So for the three options presented, what is, what's your preference?
My preference would be three, just as a new board member coming into something that was decided for me before I got on the board. I think it would be a great opportunity for new board members to. Have that opportunity to be in that process. But I'm also torn because I know that it's difficult to be a new board member and jump into a new process. So. Two and three, I'm kind of like in the middle. So I'm happy to discuss.
Okay. Thank you. Member Tapia Romero.
Thank you. My recommendation would be number two, just to pause the current process and let the new board.
Thank you, Member Jackson.
And mine is also number two. I have a question about any costs associated with number three. But so I think leaning towards two would go with three.
Why don't we go ahead and answer that question then, as it might inform other. Folks and their votes. So Ms. Apolaca and Ms. Sanchez, if you could weigh in as to whether there would be any additional cost. From the district associated with choosing option three.
Right.
Board Member Jackson, Board President, Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Gonzalez and Board Members. The cost that we would incur with number three, would it be staff time of putting something together? And then we would have to. And then we would have to advertise it again. So the advertisement cost and then staff time.
Okay. So, sorry, so may I follow up?
No.
I'm just kidding.
Yes.
Um, um, so add, so the additional, so in sorry, sustain in a paused position does, just keeps it paused, there's no additional cost with that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Dominguez.
I would say um I strongly recommend that we go with option three, start the whole process over, which will include reissuing a new RFP. I think a new board uh deserves the opportunity to take stock of their needs in light of uh our goals and guardrails and to decide what they need um help with.
Great, thank you. Member Tomorito?
Um, I'm also with number three.
Thank you. Member Benavides?
I agree with um number three being the best option, because I think the new board makeup, whatever that happens to be, they deserve the chance to decide if this is necessary, and if so, how they're going to score the potential bidders in this process. However, I'm curious if we are, if we were to decide to stop the progress we've already made, what does that look like for the district, for the ramifications? It, it feels very odd.
Okay. Uh, Board Member Benavides, Board President, Deputy Superintendent, Board Members. Actually, um, what you're going through is common when there's a change in administration.
Right.
So um, an example I have is July first, twenty twenty-three. There was a new agency, the Healthcare Authority, that was put together at the state. And there was some contracts that the uh Human Services had put in RFP. Well, when they got the Healthcare Authority, they decided to cancel the RFP and start over. So it is common.
Okay. That's helpful, thank you.
Great, thank you. And I would prefer option two, uh, which makes us um kind of tied for per preference for option three, two, three preference for option two, but sort of a halfway vote for option two. Um, so we'll eliminate option one as a plan, um, and then just talk through. Um, so for the so I guess I'll turn to first to Member Astorga, who had kind of the half vote for option two. Um, and then just sort of open up more broadly um to see how folks feel, but just based on where we've landed, um, and based on the additional information on potential cost and um implications for the district based on this, Member Astorga has, how are you feeling?
I think I'm leaning towards uh number three, just because I feel like similar to what has been said, it's good for a new board to be able to choose the process that they're going to be discussing and being in, in that process. So I think I'm, I'm leaning towards three.
Great, thank you. And so we do have um a consensus for option three. Um, and so for those of us who are option two, are you okay? I'm not much sure, looking at myself, are you okay with option two?
I'm okay with option two, if that's where the majority of the board is.
I think three.
Three, sorry, three, yep.
Yeah. I will go with the consensus.
All right, so we have a consensus for option three. Sorry, I was looking at my paper um that had three hash marks next to number two. Uh, so we will move ahead with starting the whole process over, which will include reissuing a new RFP. Um, and so as this is an administrative process, we will defer all of that work to the administration, and then we'll just um provide updates to the new board on the timing and process. All right, thank you. We will move on now to uh the next agenda item, which is Agenda Item five point four, Board Guardrail Evaluation Recommendations. Um, try to get to the next document now. Um, so this is in a sort of similar situation, if you look at our discussion memo. Um, so just as a refresher, we did establish a Board Guardrails Evaluation Ad Hoc Committee. Uh, those members were uh Member Benavides and Member Dominguez, and they were charged with designing a Board Guardrails and interim guardrails uh evaluation process. And they also created a scoring tool to accompany the evaluation. So they have completed their work on schedule, and it was shared in the board materials shared in advance. Um, and so we basically have um three options similarly for this. Again, they're bulleted, but we'll go ahead and do one, two, and three. Um, so I'd love again to hear from the board. We'll go in reverse order this time, starting at my left, so we can start with Member Benavides and end with Member Astorga. Uh, so option one, discuss whether to submit edits and move the item to a board vote. And so if we do that, we would be discussing the edits tonight. Um. The option two, discuss whether to submit edits and then table it until the new board is sworn in, and then we would give them an opportunity, and we'd all to do further edits and we would um vote. Or we can table the process until the new board is sworn in, and then they would have the opportunity to, to weigh in uh collectively with the current board members, who are the continuing board members, rather, um, on the Board Guardrail Evaluation Process. So one, discuss that we submit edits and we sort of continue with the process, we go forward with a vote on a subsequent board meeting. We submit our edits, but we table the vote until after January, or we table the process and start it over again after January. Uh, so Member Benavides, can you kick us off?
Sure, thank you, uh, President Gonzalez, and I want to acknowledge the work that went into um this with my fellow board member Dominguez. We worked very hard and we're very proud of the work. However, in the spirit of giving the new board, whatever the makeup is, the autonomy to make these decisions, I think that it's only fair, based on our last decision, to go with option three, discuss uh, and that's table the process until the new board is sworn in, because I don't think that it makes sense to even discuss the work that's been done if we're not going to vote on it and accept it. So option three for me, please.
Thank you. Member Tomorito?
I will go option three also.
Thank you. Member Dominguez?
Same thing, option three.
Thank you. Member Jackson?
Um, I will agree, I, I think option three, but I will echo um Board Member Benavides's comments that there was a lot of work that went into it. I appreciate the work. I um appreciate the tool that was put together, the evaluation and all of that. I can tell that there was effort put into this, so I appreciate that, but I do agree that it um should go to the new board.
Great, and I, I would add, we don't have to completely throw away all of the work. Um, right, yeah, so just, I don't wanted to, yep, just wanted to clarify that point. Member Tapia Romero? Thank you. Member Astorga?
Three is fine with me.
Great, and so three with me as well. And so for this one, we will also um table the process for now until a new board is sworn in. Um, but again, appreciation to the members of that ad hoc committee for that work and getting us started in um a very productive conversation on how we evaluate our own board guardrails. Um, all right, our next agenda item, we'll move to Agenda Item six, uh, which is to consider approval of the Consent Agenda, uh, which is agenda, which is six point one through six point sixteen. Um, so can I have a motion and a second for approval of the Consent Agenda?
This is Member Tapia Romero, and I move for approval to accept the Consent Agenda from Item six point one to Item six point sixteen.
I'll second, this is board two. Member. Where do you get sixteen? Six point one to six point two, right?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was just reading wrong.
Board Member Dominguez, I'll second.
Thank you. Um, and thank you to Member Tapia Romero for clarifying the motion. So we are approving the Consent Agenda, which includes Items six point one and six point two. And we have the second for Member Dominguez. Uh, Dr. Albright, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Crystal Tapia Romero?
Yes.
Courtney Jackson?
Yes.
Josefina Dominguez?
Yes.
Ronaldo Tomorito?
Yes.
And Benavides?
Yes.
Janelle Astorga?
Yes.
Manuel Gonzalez.
Yes, so that motion carries. We'll move on now to Agenda Item number seven, which is the President's Report. Um, so again, although public forum is not an opportunity for dialogue, we do want each speaker to know that you are heard and that we are working with the administration on resolutions. Some of the issues that we heard tonight were regarding Carl Perkins, the Carl Perkins Grant and CTE, Children's Health and Wellbeing, and Board Member Support. Uh, also, we just do want to acknowledge the test results that were released earlier this week. Um, so hopefully everybody is well aware and is celebrating and popping the bottles and all of the fun stuff, because Albuquerque Public Schools has demonstrated their strongest performance yet on the New Mexico Measures of Student Success and Achievement, NAMASA. Uh, with language arts proficiency increasing by four point eight percentage points, and math proficiency increasing by two point three percentage points compared to the previous year. So big pause for celebration, and we do just want to acknowledge the hard work of all of our students, teachers, principals, and staff, um, because your work is truly making a difference for our kids. So thank you. Um, and thank you to the administration for this great work that you're leading as well. Uh, let's do a round of applause. Thank you. Um, and then the second thing is just a reminder of our budget outreach. Uh, so the APS Board will be hosting two upcoming community engagement events. These are opportunities for the community to learn more about and weigh in on APS's next fiscal year budget. So there's two opportunities. One is October twentieth, five thirty to seven P M, and that is at the Burnafacio Professional Development Center. The second is on October twenty-seventh, also five thirty to seven P M, and that is at Marie Hughes Elementary School. So everyone who is watching, write those dates down, be there October twentieth and October twenty-seventh. Um, we do also still need um board members to volunteer to lead those sessions. Um, so we have volunteers to participate, we need volunteers to lead those two sessions, each of them. So if you could please uh correspond with Dr. Albright to make sure that she has that tracked, if you are willing to lead the session. Um, and leading the session just means you're holding the mic, uh, it'll come with the script and support from our finance team. Uh, so that is a reminder. And then last, a reminder that Election Day is November fourth, and as mentioned by Ms. Janet Sayers, the ballot does include a general obligation bond that would provide additional funding for APS capital projects. So a reminder, don't forget to vote uh starting October eighteenth and running through November fourth. And that concludes the President's Report. The next Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, November fifth, twenty twenty-five, at five P M at the Alice and Bruce King Educational Complex at sixty-four hundred Uptown Boulevard Northeast and livestreamed at APS.edu. Our next agenda item is to consider, our next item is to consider approval of the Board of Education to convene an executive session as authorized by the Open Meetings Act, Section ten dash fifteen dash one H two, for the purpose of discussing a limited personnel matter regarding the superintendent's evaluation. Can we have a motion and a second, please?
I consider approval for the Board of Education to convene an executive session as authorized by the Open Meet, Open Meetings Act, Section ten dash fifteen dash one H two, for the purpose of discussing a limited personnel matter regarding the superintendent's evaluation. This is Board Member Benavides.
Board Member Dominguez, I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Crystal Tapia Romero?
Yes.
Courtney Jackson?
Yes.
Josefina Dominguez?
Yes.
Ronaldo Tomorito?
Yes.
Heather Benavides?
Yes.
Janelle Astorga?
Yes.
Daniel Gonzalez.
Yes. So the meeting will uh go into executive session, and we will reg-